Call this meeting to order. The Fairfield City Council January 10th, 2022 meeting is called to order. My name is Paul Gandy. I am council member from War Two. Our mayor, Connie Boyer, is quarantining this for the next several days out of an abundance of caution. We wish her well, and we're sure she'll be up and out, up and about very, very soon. Would our city clerk please call the roll?
Flornoy?
Here.
Estee?
Here.
Gandy?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Here.
Are there any changes to the proposed agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I need to ask to remove the first item, the November 30th special council meeting minutes. I need four people for that, and that's Rasmussen, Flornoy, Ham, and Anderson. And she is not here tonight, so we won't be able to approve those.
So we're going to remove the approval of the minutes from the November 30th special council meeting, correct?
Yes, please.
All right. Any further amendments or changes? If not, I'll read the consent.
Sorry. Reason is, we don't have enough people here to approve the minutes because they're absent.
Enough people were present at that meeting?
Right.
Correct. That's right. Aaron?
We had a request to meet with council or speak in public forum. Is that on here, Rebecca?
That consideration to hear digital currency information.
I'm sorry, I missed it. So, okay, never mind.
All right.
It's covered.
All right. If not, I'll re, with understanding and taking into account that change, I'll read the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the December 27th, 2021 special council meeting. Approval of the January 3rd, 2022 special payroll of $413.52. Approval of the January 7th, 2022 payroll of $135,347.43. Acceptance of the Ways and Means Committee meeting minutes. Resolution approving employment in the Park and Recreation Department. Approval of liquor license for La Note, LLC, and for Verizon, Verizon Wine Bar. Approval of total claims in the amount of $352,079.92. Claims greater than $75,000 are McClure Engineering, $101,875.51. City would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it'd be good practice because the Ways and Means Chair reviews all of the invoices at every expense. The chairman of the Ways and Means Committee should affirm that the finances are in order, and they've been checked by a council person.
Okay. Would you like to do so? You are the chair.
I am the chair, so that's why I bring this up. Because, you know, why am I going through all this work if it doesn't mean anything to the council to know that they've been checked?
Right. I'm assuming that if the count, if there was something that the Ways and Means Chair had something to bring to the attention of the council, that they would do so. So, but if you think of statement as Ways and Means Chair...
I recommend paying the bills.
I recommend, it's a good, good idea. Good idea.
They're all in order.
Okay, your statement is?
Yeah, that they're in order.
Okay. Okay. Anything, any other further, any further discussion? Yes?
The other reason for that is the auditors like to know that we have a elected official looking at the bills along with the appointed officials. So there's another reason other than for the council to do that, but that's one of the reasons.
Okay, so it's a good idea to make that statement of, make that statement of the record that he's...
Well, when he signed, when you were, when you were signing off on it, and Doug was now signing off on it, that, those statements, the auditors check and seize, and then they know that, they know that an elected official reviewed the bills also.
Okay. All right. Anything, any other further, any further discussion? If not, Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Rasmussen? Ham?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is public forum and appearances. First, we have, I believe, Steve Beeman, Collector's Car Unlimited.
Okay, I'm here. I'm Steve Beeman's Collector Cars Unlimited. I'm here for the same thing I've been here for, for the last, this is our fourth, will be our 40th annual car show. So I've been here a time or two, and we're asking for permission to use the square again like we have for the last. I think we've been on the square for like 30 years now. Using the same streets as we've had before, everything the same, not making any changes.
I know it's always been an interesting and fun show, Steve, if you don't catch up.
There is one change I noticed that was up there. I, when I filled that form out, I put the wrong date down. The date is September 18, not 19. It will not be on a Monday.
So...
I don't think a Monday show would draw very good.
September 18th is a Sunday?
Um, according to my calendar, it is, yes. September 18th is a Sunday, yes.
What's your time range?
We will have people start picking, start setting stuff up, 6:00 in the morning. We don't have the square closed off at that time, but we're normally there at that time. And we've normally got everything picked up and put away by 5:00 in the evening.
So should we say, what time you start?
Says they have people there to start 6:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yes, starting about 6:00. I mean, there'll be people there setting up, like the registration tables on the gazebo and...
You want the three sides of the square plus one block further off the square?
Let's see, it'll be going a half a block west, a half a block or a full block north, actually a full, on both streets north, and then also going down a full block east.
And just half a block west?
Yeah, we normally put the barricade at that alley. So at the time we started, the theater was still open, and they wanted a few parking spots, and we worked with them and gave them that alleyway they could turn down that way.
I move that we allow this from, say, 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening? Is that what you want?
He's asking for 5:00, but that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, when we're done, if it rains and we are able to give the trophies out at 1:00 or whatever, you know, we all push things forward.
Okay.
But we advertise trophy presentation at 3:30.
So did you make a motion?
Yeah, motion 6:00 to 6:00.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Rebecca, if you call the roll.
Thank you kindly.
Rebecca, if you call the roll, please.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Beeman. Passed unanimously. Good show. Good luck. Our next item on the agenda under public forum and appearances is consideration to hear digital currency information. Is there someone who wants to speak to this concern? Our question?
The request was from Rick Shattickel, and this, this is a similar request from the last time that he came. Council, I had denied it because there really wasn't a city function involved, but I felt it would be a good idea for the council to decide if they wanted to hear that. I still believe that there isn't a city function. He would, he would like to see us take cri- cryptocurrency?
Currency.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
As payment here. State law won't allow us to do that, but other than that, that would be the only request of the city. But other than that, it's all about investing in cryptocurrency and stuff like that.
Yeah, it would seem to me that, you know, the issue of whether the city would take cryptocurrency or use cryptocurrency would be a matter for the state legislator, state legislative body, and they would make that decision. We had, we'd follow the code, whatever it might be. So if there were any presentation about cryptocurrency, probably, it seems to me it makes sense if you want it to be, to have traction or what have you, you make it to your state rep, your state senator, or something like that.
Thank you.
What would you like me to tell Mr. Shattick?
So, so, so we, as a council...
That it's not recognized yet as legal tender for state, so he needs to pursue that.
He's still, correct, but he still wants to present about how his organization is trying to, I'm making his presentation for him.
Yeah.
How his organization is presenting or helping people and helping people invest and all that stuff in cryptocurrency. Does the council want to hear that spiel?
I think it's more his business that wants people to invest in currency, cryptocurrency, which I'm not in favor of giving the form here for that, so, the way I understand it.
Would it be like akin to someone coming and talking about investing in a particular business or a stock or...
That they're profiting off of.
Right.
Yes. The way I understand it.
I think he, he left me a voice message today, and he, they, he is a nonprofit, I guess, but I think he want, I mean, he, he wants to get the message out on cryptocurrency. I understand that, but I don't know where the city falls involved in that. I think that's, I don't, I don't know if it's, this forum is for that particular case.
Right.
But that's entirely up to you all.
Right, right. Is it relevant to the city's business? Can we, I mean, are we asking, being asked to promote something?
No.
Any, any further discussion? Need a comment? Some people look like they want to say something.
Well, let me just clarify what happened here. I guess Rick submitted a request to speak to council.
Mm-hmm.
And then Mayor Boyer called me wanting to know if I had any conversation with him about it. I said, no, I had not seen him for a couple of months. And so I said, why don't you just put on the agenda for the council to consider if they want to hear him come and speak, and if not, then you haven't done anything wrong. And if he, they, the council does want to hear from him, we can put him on the next agenda. That was the conversation. So that's why it's on here. I asked the mayor to just put it on there to, for the council to consider what they wanted to do.
Is there any support for having him speak? Is there a motion? Will you make a motion here to make, to have a decision, administrator?
May I ask, do we usually vet people before they come and make a public appearance or forum, that they come and speak to us?
This is the only second time it's ever happened that I know of.
He has, he has come before and spoke with us about this, and at that time, we did all say that we, you know, it was basically a commercial for what he is promoting. So at that point, we did not have any further business there because we had no need for it at the time.
There's nothing we can really take action on if he comes.
No specific ask.
Right.
Okay. All right.
So to actually answer your question, I look at all of them that come in, and typically if it, if they're, if there's something that the city has, again, business with, or there's an ask of the city or something like that, it's a no-brainer. Yeah. Uh-huh. But when it's a, this type of thing, when it's a promotion of somebody's personal opinion or agenda, it's, it's a little harder for me to say, oh yeah, that's a great idea. So we did, I did deny it once this, this fall. It brought, it was brought up at council at that time because I had denied it. Then this time, I felt it was to make sure that all the council was aware that we, it was a request. I thought it was better that the council should make the decision as to whether or not they wanted to hear that presentation.
So just for the record, I have no objection to anybody from the city coming to speak to us, but I know the council's not particularly interested in hearing this topic.
If he has something new to present that it would be advantageous to the business of the city, then I guess the burden lays on him to find out what that would be, to show us what would be advantageous for us.
Right.
And present it in that manner, in his ask to be able to speak. That's the only thing.
I don't know what he wants to talk about.
Right. Okay.
So what's the proper, proper procedure here if we're, it doesn't look like, I'm not sensing their support, maybe there is...
If there's no action, there's no action.
Yep.
That's it? We don't have, we don't need a motion? We don't need...
Well, if nobody makes a motion to allow him to talk, then I won't, I will call him tomorrow and say there was no action.
All right.
It was here for our information.
Just to be clear, if the, if you make a motion, it should be an affirmative motion?
Mm-hmm.
Asking, in other words, giving permission to come and speak.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, we just take no action.
Okay.
You don't make a, you don't ever make a motion that says, you do not do something.
Okay.
You just don't do it.
Right.
So if there is no further discussion, unless there is, since the council is going to take no action.
I mean, I wouldn't make a motion to allow him to come speak.
I would second that.
Any further, okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll have a vote. Rebecca, if you will call, please.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
No.
Toohill?
No.
Gandy?
No. So the motion, the vote is three to three, so it's a tie vote, that means the motion fails.
Just like to get through this. Never let it die.
All right, let us go on to the next item. Resolutions, action items, and ordinances. First action item is consideration of 2022 IRS mileage rate of 58.5 cents per mile. Perhaps city administrator could speak to this?
That's our normal follow-through. Each year, we add, add the IRS mileage rate for conferences or trainings for, if somebody were to take their own vehicle and get reimbursed for those mile, mileage.
We're required to adopt this, correct?
I'm not sure.
I saw it somewhere else.
I'll bet we are.
Well, standard, standard. Well, we have to adopt something, and I think, obviously, adopting IRS mileage rate is pretty standard for a lot of folks to adopt the standard. IRS sets it, so that would make sense.
So I move we approve the mileage rate of 58.5 cents per mile.
Second.
Starting next fiscal year, right?
This fiscal year.
Yes.
The next one.
It's January 1 of 2022. Yep.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Rebecca, if you call the roll, please.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Yes.
Gandy? Rasmussen? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Gandy? Thank you. Ham?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Next.
Just to be clear, is it fiscal year or is it tax year?
No.
Because people, it has to be calendar year.
It is calendar year?
It's calendar year.
Because for reimbursement for personal...
I made the wrong motion.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah. So do we want a new motion?
Yeah, we need to have a new motion.
Well, I will make a motion to, to accept the consideration of the 2022 IRS mileage rate of 58.5 cents for calendar year 2022.
Second.
I'll second it.
There's a motion, a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I don't think we need to rescind the last motion since this one won.
Superseded?
Superseded.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, Rebecca, if you will call the roll, please.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
All right.
Our next action item is consideration of agreement to combine Center Township and Fairfield City Voting Precincts. I believe our city attorney has a comment on this action item.
Right. The Board of Supervisors this morning had the same agreement in front of them that you have immediately following Steve Beeman's request, and it outlines a half a dozen areas that are islands that are basically trapped inside our city new districting map. They show up as white blocks of territory. For instance, Jim Bellalove and Carrie Bell's down on Highway 1 or South Main Street in this area are one of the described areas of island. What has to happen under the state code is if those places are left without a specific spot in our districts, they still have a right to go to a polling place that's reasonably related to their residence. So we just patch them in to our voting districts and give them a designated voting place similar to what our district voting place is. Board of Supervisors had our map, and the county attorney and his assistant went through it and worded the resolution that you have in front of you so that those islands that are unincorporated but are included within our boundaries will have a voting place. So that's all this resolution is about. They passed it this morning, understand what our new map looks like, which was hardly changed from our prior map, and they don't have any issues with any of the compliance related to our map as far as the one-man-one-vote standards and so forth, which we are in compliance with. So I told Pat, who intended to be here, but he's refereeing a basketball game tonight, that we probably, if the council has any questions, we've already talked over our own redistricting and passed it at the last council meeting, and that I'd stand up and talk about any questions you have, if there are any questions.
I have.
Yes, Judy.
So this is just sending them to their closest polling place.
Correct, yeah.
But that still means, like, when there's a mayoral election or whatever...
Right.
They're still considered county, right?
Only persons within the incorporated limits of Fairfield get to vote for...
Right. Because sometimes that's confusing for those folks.
Right. So they won't get to do that.
Okay.
Any further comment? So if not, is there a motion to...
I'll make the motion that we would approve the district recommendations for voters that are county within the city islands.
Second.
The motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Rebecca, if you please call the roll.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, action item is a consideration of the, of award of adult, of audit services. Mr. Administrator?
As you all are aware, we, we were sent a letter from the state stating that they would not be able to do our auditing for the upcoming fiscal year, or actually, the current fiscal year we're in. They, they have completed our audit on our onsite part of the audit for our last fiscal year, but they won't be able to do this year's fiscal year. So we had to send out a request for proposal, and we received three, three proposals back, and you can see the, the financial results of those audits, of those proposals up there on the screen. After making some phone calls regarding the, the lowest fiscal cost, I would very much recommend that we accept their, excuse me, their proposal and move forward with having Groenwald Bell and Kind do our audit for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there a motion? Or any questions to ask, Aaron? So the action item is a consideration of the award of audit services.
Is this a one-year contract or multi-year contract?
I think it's an annual, but I...
Well, we don't have a contract. This would just be...
Correct.
We would accept the bid and then...
Yeah, and that's an annual proposal, so that's their cost for this fiscal year. And I, once you get an auditor working with you, it's kind of nice to have them to continue because then they know what they're looking at each year. But no, their proposal was for an, for this fis, this fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
I can't see the, could you put that?
The names back. The names for the motion.
Yeah, the names for the motion. But I had one other question, though, when I was reading over this. Don't we normally have a motion to accept all the bids and then, on the second motion to award the bid? Okay, I thought we had done that in the past in certain cases. So is it...
Groenwald, Bell, I think it's Kind.
And Company. For $24,958,000 for fiscal year 22.
22. If, if you're curious, they are out of Atlantic Iowa. They do, do, they actually do Washington, Iowa's audit. They do Williamsburg, they do Kelowna, then they do some other smaller communities here in the area, too. So they were pretty excited to come and do ours also, or wanted to do ours.
Give it a second.
Was that, was yours a motion? Then I'll give it a second.
There's a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
All right, and a second, all right. Any further discussion? If not, Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next, the next action item is a consideration of Law Center Monthly Statement. I believe we'll ask Mr. Flornoy to speak to this issue.
Okay, so this is a statement from the county, the auditor's office, actually, we get every month, and it's just a spreadsheet that lists different expenses. It gives you the total, and then it gives a breakdown. According to the 28E agreement that we have in place, expenses are supposed to be split 50/50 in some cases and 33, 67% in other cases. So it depends on what the item is as to how the split takes place. But the reason I asked this to be put on the agenda was two things. One, normally, you know, the city will get, you know, invoices and bills for every item that we pay, and normally, the Ways and Means Chair will go through these before meeting, check them, and then the council can vote on paying those bills. We don't get those kinds of invoices from the county. That's the first thing, so I think we should get those. And two, even though I've asked twice now for the service agency to approve a budget for that building, which is required under the 28E, there are no, there is no budget. I emailed everybody last January, I got no response. I asked Darren Hamilton and Dee Sanquist directly in a meeting last August, they said no, and we now have January 15th coming up in five days, and we need to have another budget for next year, and that, no action's been taken on, as far as I know. So what's happening here is somebody over there is making decisions on how to spend money without consulting us, and then they just send us the bill. And I think that's an inappropriate relationship. So I just wanted you to know, before you vote to approve these, this bill payment, that that's the arrangement that we have that's been going on for quite a while now, and I think we should eventually do something to address it. Probably not this year, but hopefully, starting with the new fiscal year, and we get a new 2018 place, we can start doing things more according to the book than the way they have been done. So that's why I asked it to be put on, you're aware of what's going on, and the public is aware of what's going on as well.
Is there any particular action that you would propose with this bill?
Well, since we don't have a budget, and these expenses were incurred without our consent, you know, my gut reaction is not to approve them, but I think that would cause more problems, and what we want to do is really have the services provided. I just want everybody to be aware that this is the situation. I think the city should go ahead and pay these bills because we've been doing it for so long in this manner, but I think we should fix it as soon as we can. That's all.
Perhaps you'll bring it to the attention of the council again once you.
So, I'm sorry.
Well, it's because we don't, I mean, I'm sure I can go to the auditor's office, and I'm sure they will send the invoices over if I ask them to, copies, but we don't have a budget, and county supervisors are not cooperating in putting a budget together.
So this is an ongoing situation?
Yeah, it's an ongoing situation, and I can't make them do anything.
Well, I'm sure, I suspect it'll come to the council's attention again, so, thank you.
Well, we might put it on the agenda every month, and we can discuss it, remind the council, the public, and the supervisors what's going on with that building.
So we get these invoices once a month at, like, the end of the month it comes in, or?
Beginning of the month. This is probably for, I haven't had a chance to look at this one in detail, but it's probably for December.
November.
November?
Yeah.
Rebecca?
It's the November statement.
Okay, so it's two months behind.
Does the 2018 agreement address how invoices are sent to the city or require the city's consent?
It just arranges how payment would be made.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't specify, you know, that's normal practice is to send an invoice. I think that when we send a bill to Public Health, don't we send a copy of the invoice to them?
I believe Denise does that.
Because I thought I asked her that when I was hunting all this down last summer, that we send invoices to them, they just don't return the courtesy.
I'm not asking, because I know nobody here wrote the 2018, but why, how extensive is the 50/50 split list, and why does it even exist?
Okay, so most things are 50/50, I'm sorry, 67/33. 50/50 would be things like miscellaneous manpower, candidates, ground maintenance, personnel, pest control, and that kind of thing. That's the way it's in the 2018, I'm not sure why it is. Because, you know, pest control, you would think would be 67/33 because the building is split that way.
Sure.
In terms of ownership. Property insurance is 67/33, that makes sense.
When you say 67/33, who's 67?
67% to the county, 33% to the city. What else is in there? The other thing that's 50/50.
The county's responsible for the jail and the sheriff's department.
Right.
And the city's responsible for the police department.
Right. So the other things that are 50/50 are duties and responsibilities, like, I don't know why, copy paper is in that paragraph. Meals that are violators of city ordinance and operating expenses of the service agency. So the service agency itself has expenses for publishing its menace, its agenda, that sort of thing. So the 50/50 doesn't amount to a whole lot usually.
No, it doesn't.
But those are the kinds of things. So normally, this would have been buried in here when we approved the, is that right, Erin?
Yeah, it's normally part of the.
I just asked them to take it out and put it down here separately so that I could talk to the council about it, what's going on.
Since there's a, an action item, consideration of monthly statement, do we need a motion to pay?
Please.
Okay, I will make a motion to pay the monthly statement.
I believe so.
I'll second it.
Motion by Toohill, second by Estee. Is there any further discussion? If not, Rebecca, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a resolution, consideration of statement of intent for the city of Fairfield, Iowa. This is a statement of intent proposed by the DEI Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. I believe we had spoken about this at some point earlier in our city council meetings, and we were expecting this to come before the council, so this is it, and hopefully, members have had a chance to review the resolution.
There's a typo. I don't know if that matters.
There's a typo?
Statement of intend. Statement of intend.
Yeah, it should be intent.
Right, right.
We should fix the typos, I think.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody makes a motion, you can make a motion subject to that typo being corrected, I suspect.
I'm going to put on the record that I am totally opposed to this, totally, because it is starting to tap into the thing that we're putting a few people in charge of monitoring and policing other people's language, and that goes against all freedom of speech. There are many families in this community and around southeast Iowa that are paying large amounts of money because their children were exposed to sexual things way too soon. Hundreds of thousands of dollars out of families to try to repair their children. This isn't a funny matter, it's not a simple thing, and it needs to be taken with a lot more grains of salt than what this conversation has been having so far. I would like the public to know what all this entails, because it gets into the worldviews, it gets into things beyond just an ordinary conversation. This can affect how someone lives for the rest of their life, and the consequences of all those decisions adding up. It's affecting children beyond repair, and I just don't see why we just continually keep doing things, and then we're upset because their mental stability is going, and we're not stopping to say, what are some of the things that are already factoring in to those conversations that children are hearing on a daily basis now? And this is coming against families, and they are having to deal with the onslaught of this. I just would like us to stop and take a minute before we say the whole city is now coming under this intention. That is not giving the constituents of this city opportunity to vote on this or anything. This is a few people in a room saying, we're going to do this, and it's going to affect every family here, and it won't just affect families in our city, it affects and influence out of what those families are then influencing in other families in surrounding counties and beyond. I think we need to slow down and have a deeper conversation in the community about this. These are hidden wounds. They're on the inside of people. It affects their spirits, it affects their souls. Do you understand that parents of minors, small, young children are being susceptible to perversions now because it is being shown and given out by adults as though it is normal, and they don't have a field to process this stuff? That responsibility comes back here because you're making the decision for all of those It's a grievous thing. Do you not weep for those parents who are having to deal with this stuff? I know many correction officers who have done this nationwide. A kid, six years old, 12 years old, what are they supposed to do with some of these things? It's one thing if it's perpetrated on them in a physical act, then we will do something about it, but what about exposing children to things beyond their understanding and telling them that it is normal and saying that, well, you just have to deal with it, that's just life? That is cruel. And their parents are the ones paying those monetary bills for the counselors and other things, and their families are being ostracized because that word gets out in communities. No, this is not a fun little exercise for college kids. It really is not. This is a daily occurrence across our land, and it needs to stop, and we're not going to foster it here in this city. We're not. We are adults, and we can say no. If you want to pursue things privately on your own, then you're going to deal with those consequences on your own, but we, as a whole city, are not taking this on to be some poster child of DEI. No way. No way. They're already in our local library teaching little kids this, preschool kids this. It's already in our schools, and the parents are dealing with the fallout. Families here, and you wonder why then we can't get people to stay in our community and have trust in our schools because we are authorizing adults to do this to their children? This is called grooming, if you don't know what sex trafficking is. They are getting kids ready to be groomed, and they are grooming them on a daily basis, and it's very, very perverted. Say no. That is my motion, no. It gets ripped in half, and we say no, as a whole city, no. That's my motion. And it can be a negative, because sometimes you just have to say no to something that has gone too far.
What is your motion?
Say no to the intent to bring this in citywide, no.
It's a consideration of statement of intent for the city of Fairfield, Iowa. I think the proper procedure would be a motion to approve, and then you could, you could vote no.
To approve what?
To move, to approve your statement. And as a matter of fact, let us read the statement, or let me read the statement, if I may, so we're clear on what we're, what we'd be voting on. Statement of intent for the city of Fairfield, whereas the city of Fairfield believes in and stands for values of diversity, equity, fairness, inclusion, and justice, and whereas the city of Fairfield condemns discrimination based on faith, race, sexual orientation, gender, nationality, age, immigration status, military status, class, ability, and whereas the city of Fairfield welcomes all people and recognizes the rights of individuals to live their lives with dignity, and whereas the city of Fairfield will continue to work to ensure that everyone has the resources they need to succeed by making our city's services, programs, and public spaces accessible and open to all individuals, and whereas the city of Fairfield believes in the public sector for the public good and advancing equity and inclusion is critical to the success of our communities and our nation, whereas the city of Fairfield is committed to leading with respect and acceptance of difference, and now therefore be it resolved by the city of Fairfield, by the city council of the city of Fairfield, Iowa, that the city's commitment to the values of diversity, equity, fairness, inclusion, and justice is hereby reaffirmed, passed and approved this day of 2022, for the mayor's signature and attested by the city administrator. That's the statement of intent. My response is I fail to see how this is advocating sexual trafficking.
Because you do not understand the process of grooming.
How is this?
You do not understand that the sooner a child is.
How is this grooming? Okay, I'm just asking the question, how is this grooming?
Grooming is when an adult knows that they are exposing a child to things that are beyond their understanding and taking advantage of that in a friendly manner. When people in authority over them, and that can include someone that they just admire, is exposing them to things that are beyond their developmental ability to comprehend what they're seeing and hearing and to process it and know what it is.
I don't disagree or minimize anything you're saying at all, not a bit, but is there specific wording in this that you find marginal that allows or encourages that?
Why should anybody's language be policed? The stuff that we got from DEI says that that's one of their big concerns. Why are we allowing seven people to tell us what language we can use? Right in this very room, we refuse to take down a flag because of someone's freedom of speech, whether it was good or not, no. But there's a place, when it's being taught to children already, and if you can't see it, I'm sorry for you, but it is here, it is here in this, because it's saying that all differences are all the same, and they are not the same, and you all know it. You all would be livid if it was your child that it was happening to and you didn't know it, but it's okay for somebody else to tell someone else's kid in town and let their family pay for that. What about the parents who don't know who's teaching their kids this stuff, and they're being kept in the dark, and you all are going to sanction this? No, no, we are not, as a city council, going to sanction this over the whole city. People need to know what each of these separate items are. Each one of these is loaded. If you haven't done the research, how can you vote on it tonight? If you think I'm the only one speaking out about this, boy, you better be talking to some parents that have been through this ordeal.
Are there any further comments? Our discussion? Yes, city attorney?
Let me chime in, because I have been researching this for about 40 years. The problem is, there isn't anything specific in this resolution about intending to be tolerant that is grooming, in my opinion, but 40 years ago, 50 years ago, something called the Diagnostic Statistic Manual, a DSM for psychiatrists and psychologists and mental health counselors, used to look at transgender status and persons that were showing a proclivity to be transgender as a mental illness. Seventy years ago, the DSM had homosexuality as a mental illness, and those things have been changed over the last two generations of mental health professionals, so that if you went to court and tried to do what I call a brandeis brief about what the existing facts in that particular science are, you would find that that's not the way that the professionals look at it anymore. Professionals are trying to tolerate the situation at the same time that they know that it's being abused in specific instances. So Judy, being concerned about grooming, you couldn't make a grooming case out of this if the county attorney's office had to do it to save its neck. There's just not that in the idea of tolerating transgenderism, tolerating homosexuality, but there's a lot of people that are very upset as to how it spun and how it's taught and how tolerance is taught, and you're going to find, pretty much, that the courts are going to be, they're either trying to stay neutral, or they're trying to say that everybody is entitled to some respect for whatever their choice is, and then you got all of the people out there Judy is describing as abusing this, exploiting this, that do take advantage of it. So you end up with somebody that had 544 perverse pictures of little kids and kids that were, I don't know if I'd call them biological anomalies, but people that had differences in their anatomy and so forth that would cause them to be an oddity that somebody would pay for pornographic pictures of minors that aren't fully mature, and that kind of. And that kind of stuff is out there. It does get prosecuted. It does get exposed occasionally. We have a whole division of the D C I in Des Moines that works on stuff like that. So it isn't going unnoticed. But at the same time, it's harder than it ever was to try to make this thing go through the court system and be treated as something that doesn't get a great deal of tolerance. We've had it here with the school board 15, 20 years ago, as far as what we're supposed to do as far as a gender-neutral bathroom. And so you got curtains on some of the showers now and so forth. That's about as far as the public and local grassroots government, whether it's a school board or a city wreck building or the county park, can do to keep people from being exploited or abused as far as someone that's got a perspective about their gender or where they want to be or where they want to go to the bathroom or where they want to take a shower and that kind of stuff. So it's a very awkward question for us as a government to try to regulate. This intent resolution, basically, if you go through it paragraph by paragraph, you probably can interpret it into paragraphs more than one way, but most of the paragraphs are insisting that we're tolerant, that we are looking at this as what we can do with a situation that's gotten more difficult the last couple of generations and the changes in definition. And I'm afraid the definitions are going to get more and more complicated, because I think the science compared to what you might have assumed was the normal two generations ago, it's just not there anymore. And, you know, as far as how much we can tolerate, we are not, as a public body, in a position where we can necessarily say that we have the last word on tolerance. You can, you can look at what's in a textbook, but you can't really make the decision that the school board's got to make. You can tell them that you don't approve of it if there's something in the book that you think shouldn't be there, but they're probably still going to make it a situation where if somebody wants to go look in that book, we're not going to burn the book. As far as the court dealing with this as a position that's the public position of our body, the city council saying that it tolerates all of the views in this area, maybe you want to add a sentence that says, "We do not tolerate sex trafficking. We do not tolerate grooming. We do not tolerate abuse of the uninformed," because I hear that in everything Judy just said. But at the same time, I don't know if we can pass something that is going to address the real questions as far as who should have more of a say on what we believe or don't believe as far as our level of tolerance in the community. This is probably one of the most tolerant communities I can imagine living in. We've got 80 nationalities. We've got every type of biological anomaly as far as a person can take on in this community. And I think everybody lives a pretty unimpaired life as far as other people not attacking them, other people not going after them as far as their choices. But at the same time, if we've got people that are grooming and are trying to put perversity not only into education but into the lives of young people, I mean, that's why we have a county prosecutor, that's why we have a D C I in Des Moines, and those folks are at it every day. And that's about the way I see this resolution. The city saying that it is tolerant is not the city saying that we approve of any of the aberrations on how some of these positions are used. So I guess that's my reaction to everything I heard from Judy. I firmly believe Judy is probably right on some of those things she says, but I don't know if it's something that the city has the ability to say more than we want to be as tolerant as we can be.
Thank you, thank you, John.
I have a couple of questions. I have a funny feeling that probably one or two people wrote this document. Do we know who they are? And to what degree did they talk to members of the community to find out what the, I mean, does this, if we adopt this, we're saying this reflects the values of this community? And I haven't spoken to anybody about these issues and whether the county, the city council should adopt that point of view or not, to reflect the values of the community at large. It says that we all agree to these things, but who's been talked to about this?
Yes, Mr. Minister.
It was written by the D E I committee.
Well, I know that. Usually, like that spreadsheet I put together, one person or two people do all the work.
Correct.
Any other ones, just go ahead with the result.
Adrienne Loggins, I believe, is on that committee, I think. And I can, we can call her if you would like to ask her questions tonight.
No, I'm just, my point is that it doesn't, the writing of this does not reflect the broadness of the community that exists in Fairfield.
Okay, I don't--
In terms of input, okay?
Well, I think that's an opinion, but I don't know if that's true. The D E I came--
But there's no evidence that it is.
The D E I came before the committee last month. They were present, and they talked about preparing a statement of intent. If it's the city's intention to have some better understanding of it, you can call them back again. This is the statement of intent that's being proposed. Call them back again and then ask the questions that you may have, or express the concerns you may have.
There are a couple of things in here that probably aren't true also, but I won't parse it. But it says we reaffirm this. Did we ever affirm this in the first place? Not that I'm aware of. And lastly--
Something along that line, Doug. When we created the committee, the mayor asked us to support our in creating the committee.
Yeah. But that's different from this. But the last thing I wanted to say is, if we approve this, and speaking to Judy's term of grooming, no, this document in and of itself is not an example of grooming, but it's a component of grooming, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Because you normalize and you teach children, these are normal things for people to be doing, everybody's doing it. There's some middle school classes in this country where a huge number of the girls all profess to be transgender, way beyond the statistical norm. Have they been conditioned to think this is okay and this is what we should do? I don't know. But if we approve this, aren't we giving credence to that kind of thinking and doing? Accepting? Now, the other question I wanted to ask is if we--
Wait, wait, how? How?
Is there a difference between promoting and condemning discrimination? I mean, we're not, if it's the verbiage that's the problem, then--
Well, I'm just wondering how people are going to read this when they say, okay, the city council believes in all this stuff. Do we?
You don't get a choice. It's in the Iowa constitution and the federal constitution.
Well, my other question was going to be, how many of these are protected classes? Because I don't think they're all protected, are they?
I think except for the word class and ability, everything else is in the constitution as far as something that's protected from discrimination.
So I had this thought a while back, that if a transgender male, no, female, meaning a man who thinks that he is a woman, wants to go into the ladies locker room at the Park and Rec Center, are we going to affirm that behavior? Does it, would this document support their case that we already affirmed that behavior? And so we shouldn't bar it?
The answer is no, it doesn't. It doesn't affirm that behavior. What are you looking at? Are we looking at the same document?
Well, like you said, it could be read lots of different ways.
Yes, and many things can be read lots of different ways, but the way that most people would read it would not, unless, unless you're looking at something that I'm not seeing, the way that most people would read this is no, that would not be something that would be allowed or supported or encouraged.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, I'm sure about that.
And that's the bait and switch that I don't feel comfortable with, because I believe that this is just a slippery slope. This is the step in to get us to agree to something ourselves.
What's the slippery slope part? I mean, what's the language you're looking at?
There's a whole lot of language here that's very twisted, and it is moved--
Hold on for a second. Hard copy.
I think that's the concerning thing, is that, you know--
It is just vague enough--
Right.
--so that it can go either way, and it can be used any which way. And that's where--
Understand that.
Even, even our city services and programs, that means all taxpaying people are agreeing to be paying for things that maybe they personally do not share that worldview.
I don't think this, this is a statement of intent. It's not law. It's not Iowa code. So this is not forcing anyone to do anything. It doesn't say that. It's an intent, a statement of intent--
Right.
--not a law.
What kind of intent? What kind of intent?
The language is right here. So what language are you pointing to that suggests perversion, sexual trafficking, and grooming? What language is there in there? I'm just asking the question because I'm curious about it, because I'm not seeing it.
Well, like I said, it's not grooming, you know, in its, this document itself is not grooming.
Well, we're talking about this document, aren't we? This is the document we're talking about.
This is a piece of a kind of--
What? Is this a piece, like page one, or is there some other pages?
Oh, yeah.
They are? Where? So, so there's a resolution, and there hasn't been a motion, and there hasn't, there hasn't been a motion. We're having discussion without a motion. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion?
I make a motion that we set this aside and do not consider this for the city as an intent. Thank you.
That's a motion to table, you mean?
That's what it is. What he's suggesting is you can, we can move to table a motion, continue, let's say, bringing forward to, bringing forward for council, the D E I committee, our representative of the D E I committee, to explain this statement of intent.
I think we need to let the general public know what this involves for them, too.
Well, the general public, we have to assume, is represented by the city council. That's where, that's where I'm here. That's why I'm in the council. And so the council would bring before it someone who represents the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and they could explain and possibly defend, depending on what the questions are, the statement of intent. We represent the public. The public are certainly invited to this meeting, and they, or they can view it, or send in their comments to their council members. And we proceed that way. But I mean, that's, that's the way, if there's a concern on the council that perhaps this, this statement does some things or gives license to some things that are inappropriate, then it seems to me that a viable path would be for someone from the committee to come before the council and then discuss this with the council. And then maybe we might take action. Maybe we won't, but maybe we might take action.
Okay, if we take Judy's motion as a motion to table, then I would second that.
There's a motion to table by Ms. Hamm and a motion to, and a second by Mr. Flannoy.
With what intention? To readdress at--
Normally, when you table a, when you have a motion to table, that item comes up as the first item on the next agenda.
Right.
So it's being tabled because people want more time to think about it or to gather information or--
So we're going to--
I'm not putting any intent behind the table--
We're going to table it as written and discuss it at the next council meeting?
Well, I would suggest we add to the motion. I would suggest you add to the motion, motion to table with the understanding we will invite the Diversity and Equity, our representative of the D E I, to speak before the council on this particular statement of intent.
You also need to invite an opposing viewpoint, too.
I think we have one. It's already present.
So it's being tabled, then?
Let the public come and speak to it.
A public hearing about a statement of intent?
It's supposed to reflect the values of the community, so we have to hear from the community. I mean, according to John, we're already doing all these things under Iowa code, and there's no example of us not doing anything illegal in the city, right? In regard to discrimination of any kind?
You couldn't pass an injunction that said, "We support discrimination based on," I mean, you couldn't--
No, no, I'm saying we, there are no examples of us being discriminatory in our practices in the city of Fairfield. Is there? The city government does?
Not that I'm aware of. About every two years, the citizens of Virginia buy different ornaments on the square for Christmas.
Right, all right. So this is kind of a redundant statement, then, in that sense, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we're--
We're already doing these things, aren't we?
I'm sorry, we're--
Yeah. No one's come to us and objected to anything in regard to any of these topics in the eight years I've been here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with--
Where's the, where's the violation that we need to address?
I don't think they're addressing it. As far as I can tell, it's not violation of the statement of intent.
We're already doing these things, so why do you have to, we're doing them.
Okay, then why is it a fire then? Why is it a fire if we're already doing these things?
Because it's like, well, I don't know why. It's a, it's a, for whatever reason, they want to do this.
So there's--
If you have the committee come, just have them explain why they think this is necessary. And if somebody says they don't believe it's necessary, let them be heard.
I think that makes sense. And then if, if from there it is the council's view that a public hearing is warranted, then we could have that public hearing, our public forum or something. But I think the next step would be to have the D E I come before the committee.
Can I tell a little story that illustrates, I think, a little bit of what I'm thinking? When I was on the, I think it was the Environment and Friendship Committee, Michael Haley was chairing, when I first got on the council, J. Fan came to us and wanted us to pass a resolution condemning the use of antibiotics in agriculture. Why? Just to be a poster boy for the next city council down the road, and they get on the Otoa and say, "Well, Fairfield passed this, why don't you guys pass this?" And they're, what they're doing is they're going around getting councils to pass those kinds of resolutions to build political plout, political plout, clout, plout, political clout to achieve a particular end that they have. And we're just pawns in their game. So this is what I'm fearful of in this situation as well. It's for that--
That's a little different, though. I mean, they were asking you to pass something that wasn't already in code.
Right.
This isn't, but I'm, I'm all for, if you want to table it and have them come and explain it to us next meeting, that's, that's fine.
Well, the motion's on the table, and there's already a second to table it.
We're discussing it now.
May I ask, how did the D E I committee come to be? Was that something that the city council was involved in creating, or did they appoint themselves or?
It came about because there was a presentation on the square. They were invited to come in as one, under one name of a committee, which we all agreed to. Then they changed the name, and they changed the intent, and they changed the mission. That's how that all came about.
Now, note that the city has agreed, to this point, the city has agreed to the D E I formation, its change in name and its mission. We have agreed to that.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering. Thanks.
So any, any other discussion? If I'm going to phrase the motion, if I understand it, the motion is to table, table discussion of, or table the, the consideration of the statement of intent, prepared by the Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Committee, with the understanding that we'll invite the D--
Proceed to vote.
What?
I think tabling it is not achieving anything.
Martha, you have anything further?
I am in favor of seeing Judy's motion moved forward.
So technically, we have a motion to table. We really can't vote, can't have a motion to not adopt. That would not be normally done. But right now, we have tabled to, to, a motion to table and a second.
That's where we are. And the table means table with the subject to inviting the D E I, our representative of, to come before the council and explain and answer questions about this statement.
That wasn't her motion, but if the mayor wanted to do that on the next agenda, it was just to her.
I know it's not her motion. I'm suggesting that we add that to the motion.
Well, you can if you're chair.
I'm not chair, I'm acting as a council member.
That's right. Well, you can ask your to amend your motion.
What, what are you amending?
What I'm suggesting is that you table the emotion, which is your motion, and we add to your motion that we invite the Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Committee to come before the council to explain the intent, to explain the meaning of the motion.
Not if you're not going to have an opposing viewpoint there, because the intent that you're trying to bring is it'll further your agenda.
No, I'm not.
And your intent.
No.
And you're trying to dilute what I am trying to say. And I'm not, I am standing for the families in this community and around this area that have been paying a high price for this for a long, long time. And we are not going forward with that. We're not.
So if you have a motion to table and you don't have any further, you have a motion to table with no further discussion of, is that what you're asking? I'm trying to understand what you're asking us to do.
The motion to table is to table it now, not discuss it further today.
All right. How do we bring it up? If we're going to bring it up again, any council?
Well, the mayor can put anything on the agenda that she wishes.
Okay, okay. All right. So there's a motion to table and there's a second. Any further discussion? Rebecca, if you call a roll, please.
Hamm? What am I?
To table the resolution.
Yes.
Statement of intent. Florinoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen? Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
No.
So the vote is, is that three to three?
Five to one, I think.
Four to two.
Four to two.
Four to two?
Who voted against besides Est, Elizur?
Martha.
Whoever voted against it? Okay.
So the motion is four to two, so the motion is tabled. The resolution, the, the resolution is tabled.
Consideration of.
Consideration of the resolution is tabled.
Of statement.
Consideration of statement for intent for the city of Fairfield is?
To table.
Tabled. Okay. All right. Next item of business, resolution, consideration of resolution, naming depositories. Perhaps the city administrator could speak to this?
At this point in time, we're naming the same depositories that we've had in the past. We also have to set the amounts that we put in each, each of those depositories. And that's what this resolution is addressing.
Melanie, can you open that resolution, please?
Yeah, sorry.
I would move for approval.
These are not, well, I'd second that.
What, what happened to the persons that were being considered coming and presented to us?
We're, we're still having that, getting that together.
It wasn't part of the original motion, John. And Paul, Paul wanted to amend the motion, but it.
For the depositories.
Didn't go. I pointed out the mayor can put anybody on the agenda that she wants to in the future.
Right, so this is not necessarily going to remain, or it could change? No.
The only thing, as far as this is concerned, is we're looking at is First National Bank was bought by Midwest One.
Right.
And the question was to look into whether we wanted to have a local bank or continue with Midwest One, which is a regional, larger bank. And we need to get set up with both Midwest One and First Iowa State Bank to come and present to the council.
So, just a question about why we have so many small amounts distributed around instead of condensed into one? First National has $20 million. Why don't we have, like, why do we have, is there $500,000 in Burlington?
So Two Rivers is our EBS, our partial self-funding insurance fund. So they have some of our money. The Iowa State Bank, they house a couple of our smaller accounts.
These are accounts that can't be mixed or something or?
Correct, yes.
And they would exceed the limit that First National allows?
No, they've just been set in those other banks.
Out of an old habit?
That's where they were.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we did move some money to I-Pate, so we just have to have an up to maximum balance named.
So these are not how much is in there now? These are the maximums that are allowed?
Correct.
Right.
And we can bring this back if it changes banks.
Well, there's a possibility here in the future that, because the CDs that we have at Community First Choice could move. And that bank might not be on this list when we put it out for bid. So then we would have to change that. But I don't know which bank that's going to be, so there's.
No, I'm serious.
There's no reason to list it at this point in time. So it's a possibility. But, you know, we are actually looking at what our primary bank account holder is anyway. So this will change, but current, doing current business as is right now, this is how we're doing business right now.
Okay. And all of these are secured with appropriate limits, so we wouldn't be at risk?
Correct.
In any of these cases?
Correct.
So I call them. Motion. I'll call for the vote.
We, we actually have one? Rasmussen and then Florinoy.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, who made the motion?
Martha did.
Martha did.
Okay, he seconded it?
I did.
All right, fine. Any further discussion? All right, let's call a roll, please.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, consideration, resolution, consideration of providing fiscal year '23 financial support of Area 15 Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $4,812.16.
Move we approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Florinoy, second by Toohill. Any further, any discussion or explanation?
Just for new people here, this is based on population?
Correct.
Yep. And we give it to them every year, right?
Yep. Correct.
Any further discussion? Rebecca, please call a roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Matt, motion passes unanimously. Next item for consideration, resolution, consideration of providing fiscal year '23 financial support of Regional Planning Affiliation in the amount of $1,503 even.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Florinoy, second by Toohill. Any discussion? Rebecca, please call a roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Quick question. These are going to go in the budget for next year. Why don't we just put them in there and approve them when we approve the budget?
Because we have to, I think, have to have them accepted at the beginning of the calendar year and our fiscal year. We probably approved them or had them budgeted for last year, but then we approve them here in council because of the resolution that's requested from Regional Planning in Area 15.
Area 15 sends these to us for approval because they need them for their records also.
For their?
For their records. So they know how much money they can expect to.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense.
All right. Next item is the mayor's report. The mayor's asked me to, I believe at our last city council meeting, we are the, our special council meeting, we, we approve the mayor's committee, committee assignments. But she's asked that I make the announcement public, for the public, and for clarity. So I will read what the city committee or council committee assignments have been and that have been approved. Economic development, Toohill, Gandy, Anderson. Environmental and franchise, Esti, Florinoy, and Hamm. Personnel, Hamm as chair, Florinoy, and Toohill. Property, Gandy as chair, Rasmussen and Esti. Public safety and transportation, Anderson as chair, Rasmussen and Gandy. Water and sewer utility, Rasmussen as chair, Toohill and Esti as members. Ways and means, Florinoy as chair, Anderson and Hamm as members. Mayor Pro Tim, Gandy. Area 15 multi-housing, Hamm. These are the agencies. E-911 Board, Anderson. Fairfield Cultural Alliance, Rasmussen. Jefferson County Ambulance, Esti. Jefferson County Service Agency, Florinoy and Gandy. Simco, Hamm, and Walton Club Liaison, Toohill. Those, that's for the record, but of course, as we said, we've had those approved as of our last special council meeting. Next item on the agenda is the city attorney report. Should there be one?
Nothing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. All right. Next item, our committee and board reports. And the sole item on this portion of the agenda is the service agency committee. Jefferson County Service Agency Committee, of which Mr. Florinoy and myself are members representing the city. The Jefferson County Service Agency Committee met last Friday here at City Hall. The members of the committee include the two members of the city council, as well as two city, two county supervisors and a non-voting chair. At that meeting, with the approval of the city from our last city council meeting, we presented to the J.C., Jefferson County Service Agency, JCSA, a proposal that the issue, the issue that we've been discussing for some, for a couple of years now, as to how do we fund and operate the dispatch center, be resolved by following the Iowa code as we understand it, and resolving the issue of the dispatch center and also funding for the Emergency Management Agency by authorizing our, the city recommending that the Emergency Management Commission authorize a levy, which we, we describe as akin to an insurance premium on all the citizens of Jefferson County, to be able to fund both the dispatch center and also the Emergency Management Agency. That was our proposal before the JCSA. The county supervisors rejected that proposal. The vote was two to two. County supervisors rejected that proposal and, and put forth their own proposal, our counterproposal as well, which Doug will speak to in just a moment. Our position, at least as, as members of the agency, is that our proposal still is the fairest, simplest, and least disruptive path forward. The county proposal, as you'll understand, is, we think, a proposal that's too disruptive, too radical, and unnecessary in order to achieve our ends. So we're, we're going to, based on our understanding of our conversation with the council and approval from the council at last meeting, we're going to continue moving forward with the idea of proposing to the Emergency Management Commission that they adopt our suggestion. That's where the meeting, that's where we are right now with the Jefferson County Service Agency. There's that proposal and there's the other proposal of the city, of the county, county supervisors. We're due to meet again, the JCSA, JCSA are due to meet again on January 18th. And we'll have further discussions. We also have invited, for our next council meeting, which is going to be January 24th, Brett Farrell, who is the director of the Emergency Management Agency, to come before the council and speak to, and I think this is something that we don't, at least I didn't know too much about what he did and how important his role is until he spoke before us at an informal meeting we had last week. So we're inviting Brett Farrell, and he's agreed to appear before the council on January 24th to describe what his function is, what the, what the job is of the EMA, what the kind of things he do. It's very interesting and very important, very critical that, and I think the city and the public ought to hear what he has to say and present. So he's invited on the 24th, and I think we'll have a better understanding of why we are, our proposal makes the most sense after you had a chance to speak with Bretton and ask him questions. Brett Farrell, the Emergency Management Agency Director on June, January 24th. So that's where we are in terms of the meeting, at least that's my understanding of it. And of course, Doug will speak about the county proposal and any other comments he wishes to make.
Did you tell them the outcome of the vote?
The outcome of the vote was two to two, so.
What, tell what motion was?
The motion was, the motion was that we recommend to the Emergency Management Commission. The Emergency Management Commission, it's, it's interesting, I think I'm understanding it. The Emergency Management Commission consists of nine people. The mayors of each incorporated entity in the county. There, there, and also one county supervisor and the sheriff, Jefferson County Sheriff. So our thought was this is very broad-based. The mayors are accountable to their constituents with elections every two years, so they're quite accountable. They know their constituents. And so we thought that would be the place where, in terms of forming a budget for dispatch center and Emergency Management Agency, that would be the place where the best decisions would be made. So our recommendation to the Jefferson County Service Agency is that we recommend to the Emergency Management Commission that they prepare a budget and that they determine how the fund, the budget should be funded. They have the authority to fund the budget by way of a levy on all the residents, all the residents in Jefferson County. So that was our motion and we voted, Mr. Florinoy and I voted for the motion, and the two supervisors in the committee voted against the motion. The chair of the committee, Tammy?
Jones.
Tammy Jones, the chair of the committee is a non-voting chair. So the vote was two to two. Of course, you have a two to two vote, the motion fails. But again, the motion was a motion to recommend to the EMC. We can't tell them or instruct them what to do. So the proposal, the, the idea still lives. It's up to the EMC eventually, if they do consider it, to decide whether or not they want to, they want to use that authority to impose a levy. That's where we are right now.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Florinoy?
We think that this proposal is a more comprehensive solution, not just to the city of Fairfield's issue with the dispatch center, but county-wide, it would address, I think, problems that Brett has with his situation, which is not clear to me, but based on our conversation we had with him Monday a week ago.
Yeah, I think so. Yes.
It seemed to me there was a better solution out there, and that would be served by having the EMA levy the county for this county service. So it just makes a lot of sense to me. It would solve a lot of problems.
Solve a lot of problems, and there's two, two groups of people we want to make sure are taken care of. That is the dispatch, people who work at the dispatch center. They're first responders. They're, they're city employees, but they serve the entire county. And we want to make sure that their, their jobs are secure, that are treated well. The proposal by this county is, in our view, in our view, is disruptive because the county is proposing that city employees, the dispatchers, become county employees. Now, to become county employees from city employees, they have to lose their jobs from the city. They have to apply for jobs from the county. And their benefits, whatever, whatever benefits they have in the city, or whatever seniority they've accumulated, that's subject to the county's decision. We just think it's not necessary. We think there's a simpler way to do it and a fairer way.
Yeah, this resolution to recommend to the EMA to levy for all of these costs would keep the dispatchers as city employees. So the whole question about their benefits, seniority, employment would not even come into question.
Yeah, just like we have, you know, the fire department. Fire department, they're city police, but they serve the county. Similar to that. So anyway, Doug was going to speak a little bit more about the county proposal.
So this is just a really super condensed look at the money that's going into the 28E. So I want to make a distinction here, that the supervisors make the distinction between building and the employees in dispatch. Building maintenance and cost for supplies such as paper and, you know, soap, drinking water. They set that aside, they want to set that aside as one item and, and remove all the salaried employees that the city pays for dispatch. Take that out of this budget sheet that I prepared. And I pointed out to them that the employees that are in dispatch are item number three in the 28E, and they are integral to this 28E. So they're not a separate issue. So when I presented this to them, that's the first objection they had. So if you just look at the top sheet, I should have numbered these, but I had a busy day. The top sheet, it says grand total expenses for the 28E. So when I talk to the supervisors, I'm talking about the 28E in total, all of the expenses associated with that agreement. The total there is $723,506.09. That's, now what I did was I went back to fiscal year '21 and I pulled out all of the auditors' bills for that building. And I tallied them up and segregated them according to different parts of the 28E agreement. So I have all that if you want to see it someday, but I'm just showing you the totals here. So I'm going to round off to whole numbers here and not talk about pennies. But it's $724,000 basically for the whole building. Of that $724,000, you read across here to the right, county pays $160,000. The city pays $563,000. The reason we pay so much more than the county is because we pay for all of the salaries of the employees in dispatch. Plus, we pay for 33% of a lot of the items that come out of the maintenance of that building. And in some cases, we pay 50% of the items that are required for supplies, et cetera, in that building. The county pays 67% of maintenance of the building and 50% of the supplies. So when we carry the weight of the employees in dispatch, that weight is about $458,000. And that's why our percentage is so much higher than the county's. So we're paying, out of the 28E, to be clear, out of all the expenses incurred with the 28E, we are paying 78% of the city. 28E, we are paying 78% city, and the county's paying 22%. We're actually paying more than 78%, but we'll get into it a little later. Any questions about that?
Well, you know, I want to, yeah, lots of numbers. It comes down to something that we noticed, and that our city administrator and Doug have done quite a bit of work on over the last 20 years. The numbers, the reason we're talking about this, the reason we're looking at this seriously is the numbers actually add up to something significant. Aaron?
Estimate how much money we've overpaid, in our view, overpaid over the last 20 years?
Over the last 20 years, estimated numbers, because the salaries have changed, it'd be fairly, a fairly conservative guess would be about $3 million we've paid in excess compared to what the county's paid for their, the 28E agreement.
And that's just the first order analyses?
Three million dollars.
We're not done.
That's a conservative amount.
That's where we're looking at. So we're looking at $3 million over 20 years that we're paying more than we believe, based on our calculations, we should be paying.
Correct. Now, the city administrator and the Chief of Police, Dave, correct me if I remember wrong, think that because dispatch takes in all the calls for the county, and 60% of the residents of the county live in the city of Fairfield, 40% of the residents of the county live outside the city limits, that we should split the salaries for those dispatchers, 60% burden to the city, 40% burden to the residents outside the county, outside the city limits.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. So if, that's because of call volume. We get 60% of the calls dispatched to within the city of Fairfield, roughly 40% outside the city. So if you have a $458,000 bill for dispatch salaries, and you split it 40/60, the county would be responsible for $183,000, and we would be responsible for $274,000. Of that, 457. And remember, these numbers are over a year old now, right?
That's this next year's salary budget.
This is not the current year's salary, but it's...
Next year's.
This 457 is 23?
I believe so. I'd have to go back and look.
I got it from you last summer, so...
Well, then it's current year.
Okay, but it's close.
Yes.
And there are the numbers for the census that I put in there, just so you can reference those, based on the 2020 census, a legitimate website, the government runs it. All right, 60/40. So let's say we shifted those salaries obligations the way I described here, $183,000 to the county, and then $274,000 to the city, then the total cost for this year that I have analyzed would be $343,000 for the county, and $380,000 for the city. Then right below that is the actual paid, so the difference would be, the county would owe us $183,000 just based on this simple analysis. So they could write us a check tomorrow. It's not going to happen, but that would be the idea. Now, but here's the kicker. The supervisors levy the citizens of Fairfield into their general basic, right? Is that what it's called?
General basic.
So when the county is paying for these portions to support this building, 36% of their money that they're giving to us to pay for this, or paying for this, is being paid for by city taxpayers.
That is called...
We call that double taxation, or something. It's not double taxation, I mean, everybody's taxing properly, but we're paying twice. The city, so if you...
That sounds like double taxation to me.
That's probably supervisor correcting.
Council.
I have the numbers here. So here's how I think about it. So let's say that the city puts a dollar into that building. The entire dollar that the city puts into that building comes from city taxpayers. Let's say the county matches that dollar with a dollar. Well, when the county puts a dollar into that building, 36 cents of that dollar comes from the city of Fairfield taxpayers, and 67% of that dollar comes from people who live outside the city limits. So for the $2 that would go into that building, the county is paying 64...
67.
64 cents. Did I say?
It said 67.
Oh, yeah. I shifted it by three cents because you told me...
It should be 37 cents.
37?
Yeah, so you're right. It should be 64 cents, and we pay...
We're paying a dollar 36 out of $2, and they're paying 64 cents. Is that right? Close enough.
In the ballpark.
It's in the ballpark, within a couple pennies. So they're paying us back with our, with our own taxpayers' money. Our valuations being taxed by the county, and they're using that to pay us back. So, even if we were to accept this distribution of pay, $183,000 for the county, and $274,000 for the city, we'd still be paying too much. So if you come down here to the next line, where it says total cost for each under the assumptions indicated above includes salaries, the county would pay, if this happened, $343, $343,000. The city would pay $380,000. If you took the portion that the county is paying and take 36% out of it as a credit back to the city, that's $123,000. So, on this analysis, it would say the county would pay $183,000 for salaries, and then another $124,000 because they're taxing the city residents to pay for those salaries again, because we've already taxed them once. Does that make sense? So that comes to a difference of $306,000 a year, at least last year, that we feel the county owes us. Is that right, Aaron? Roughly.
Yep.
We just put that word roughly in there, then everybody agrees. Because it's hard to get these numbers nailed down, it's hard.
But the thing is, you modify that by 20 years.
Modify that by 20 years.
Yeah.
And that's where that $3 million number comes from, or $4 million, depending how far back you go and what the salaries really were. That's all water under the bridge. We're ready to forget that. We just want to move forward. Okay, so that's one look at that whole situation. Now, with this, page one, all of the dispatchers would remain city employees. That's what the supervisors object to. They object to they're giving us any money, even a penny, that would go to pay, towards paying salaries of city employees.
That's not what they're paying for, though. They're paying for a service, right?
They're paying for a service, yeah, for across the county.
They're not paying individual salaries of city employees.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to point that out.
Explain that.
Well, they're buying a service. Our employees are providing a service to the county.
Right. And...
Just like our fire department just sent us, how much money did Vedic City send us for fire department services?
For fire protection service.
Right, so...
They're not paying, and the same with the dispatch, they're paying for a service, not city employees.
Okay, they're paying for a service, okay. Not employees.
Right, so Vedic City pays for fire protection. They just sent us a check. We sent $5,000 to Packwood for their portion of that payment, right? None of that is earmarked. As far as Vedic City knows, we use that money to pay salaries of firefighters, and as far as we know, Packwood uses that $5,000 to pay salaries of their firefighters, right? People are doing it all the time.
But they don't have to. They can use it for fire department expense.
Right.
So it's not earmarked specifically for salaries.
Right.
And none of this is. It's for a service.
Yes.
Okay.
But...
If that's how we wish to use it, we can't.
We're doing calculations based on salaries, and that's why it comes up there. Okay. Any questions about that? Okay.
I have, I do have one question. The $123,536, which is a 36% of the county evaluation, what is the, what is, just roughly, do you know off the top of your head what the county's annual budget is?
No, I don't.
I don't. I haven't checked that. We were basing all of the evaluations off of $950 million total, dollars, total evaluations throughout the county. We have about 350. The small municipalities have around 50 million, so incorporated valuation throughout the county is around $390 million, and the total evaluation is 950. So the county has about 500 million in just unincorporated, and the incorporated has just shy of 400 million. Does that make sense?
So you're trying to get at what fraction of their budget this would amount to?
So 36% of their total budget of everything comes from within the city of Fairfield.
36% of the, of the general basic, their debt service, and then there's a couple other ones. I can't remember what those are. There's, there's one other, which is called rural basic.
Right.
And that levies all of the unincorporated areas in the county.
So it's a dollar 84 per 100,000...
Correct. Rural basic is about a buck 84, a thousand, and the rest of it, which everybody pays, is $7.30 somewhere in there.
Okay.
Dave, did you want to say something?
I just was getting answered, there's two hills. Usually the sheriff's office budget is just over 2 million, but in all fairness, half of that's for jail staff and expenses they have in the jail. So they have a budget roughly close to ours for the sheriff's office.
Okay.
That's just the sheriff's, not the whole county, though?
Correct, just sheriff's office. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I asked Rebecca to attach the, so we got this document from the county on the Wednesday before the Friday we had our meeting. Wednesday afternoon, I think, is when I saw it. I didn't get a chance to read it till Thursday morning, which is a letter they sent, which is their latest, well, the only proposal we've ever received from the county is this one here. So they had another proposal on the table in December that they emailed to us, but it was just status quo. It was the exact same language as is in the existing 28E, no changes whatsoever. So that's what they've been presenting to us since the beginning. This is the first time we had something new. So if you go through this, they're proposing that the supervisors employ the dispatch personnel, and that the city, so this is the second page. Halfway down, it starts describing what their proposal is. It's kind of buried in these paragraphs, but they're suggesting that the county employ dispatch personnel, and that the city pay the county a percentage of the cost of personnel and equipment services, which I'm not sure what that means, based on percentage county population living in the city, 60%, and then 40% outside the city. Okay, so personnel, we cover that 100% right now, the cost of personnel, FICA, salaries, all that stuff, hypers. Equipment services, we're already paying for that, aren't we?
We pay a percentage of the equipment already.
Yeah, we pay for 33% of it, right?
Correct.
So we're already paying a percentage of the equipment services. I don't understand what they want different there. They haven't spelled it out. They would fund this through their general fund levy, which, as we already talked about, 36% of that fund comes from taxpayers who live in the city of Fairfield. Down here, a couple paragraphs later, they point out that the dispatchers would come under the supervision of the Jefferson County Sheriff. So they don't say anything in their proposal about how they would address the transition of our city employees, their salaries, benefits, seniority, all the issues you might think about, associated with your employment, how that would transition to county employment. So that's totally unanswered here. The 60% number is based on population, which we have also used, based on the number of calls that come in. But again, if you want to go back and correct for the taxation that the city residents are paying to the county, which then comes back to pay for these salaries, I'll show you that number in a moment. So that's why I told them on Friday that we didn't think the 60% number would be correct. And lastly, our city administrator, Aaron here, and probably Dave, I haven't talked to Dave personally about this, but we are, we wonder who would make policy and how it would be implemented, and what would be our say in policy for dispatchers. And Dee asked me specifically for an example, but I couldn't give her one. I'll put you on the spot here, David, can you give me an example of where that might be important to us? Or how it might be important to us?
It was actually something when we first started this process, that we offered them, if they took a fairer part of the budget, instead of the chain of command being directly to the Chief of Police, my office, it would be to a board that they would have, the Board of Supervisors would have a couple on, along with City Council, and then the other smaller communities. So it's something we clarified with them immediately when we were, our point was, if you're going to pay your fair share, you should have some say in the supervision of dispatch, at least partially. It's something that they haven't returned so far verbally to myself or dispatch supervisor Shannon Pester. They're not saying chain command, how we would have any input, other than dispatch would switch to being under the sheriff's chain of command. If it's like the jail, there's a dispatch supervisor, but, I'm sorry, jail administrator that answers right to the sheriff, but there was no input from the police department at all. That's our biggest concern, and additionally, there hasn't been any information from the sheriff's office on how they would plan to take complaints from several agencies like we've set up in the past.
Okay. So you already have a mechanism in place for taking complaints for like first responders from around the county, and is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Since dispatch does for fire departments, all the fire chiefs in our county know who to email and to do it immediately, so we all have a recording so we can pull them from our computer system as quick as possible. All the first responder groups, the EMS folks, all know through several meetings what our complaint investigation, internal investigation, we call administrative investigations, procedures are, and how to notify us immediately, and it will be thoroughly investigated, sir.
Okay. And then, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'll just try and give an example. For example, if a dispatch, dispatcher gets a call from out in the county, and they get a 911 number, like one of those blue tags for the address?
Yes, sir.
Then the dispatcher has to call the appropriate first responder team for that particular address, and sometimes they make a mistake.
Yes, sir.
So then the first responder, who should have been called but didn't get called, is unhappy, because don't they get some funding based on the number of calls they answer?
A lot of it's just working with a lot of type A personalities in emergency services. Everybody wants to be the one responding to the call to save the day, I guess is the best way to say. So we set up procedures when those complaints started coming in. It rarely happens.
Right.
But we've challenged them, I should say, the first procedure we came up with was we would do, since their concerns were boundary lines that not all dispatchers were familiar with, because they haven't lived in those smaller communities all their life. We would just do an all-page, so all first responders, they decided they didn't want that through a couple meetings. And I can understand the people in Lockridge don't want to wake up at 2:00 in the morning for a medical emergency in Libertyville, so our next proposal or recommendation to them was, if we do make the mistake every once in a while, don't get mad, don't wait till later, just call us right away, even if it is 911, and say, hey, that's, I'll just use an example, a pack... just use the example of Packwood, instead of Libertyville, and then we'll re-page the right agency in disregard the other one. So it's worked. All the first responder groups are very happy. We don't make a lot of mistakes, but every once in a while we get the wrong line. Most of it's on our computer now, sir.
So there's all these little issues and you have a mechanism in place for dealing with it already. And when, if we were to shift these employees from city employment to county employment, you would want to be part of that mechanism?
Definitely.
For dealing with these issues.
Because we're still 60% of law enforcement calls. So we would want kind of, of at least a voice in the decision-making or a mechanism to file a concern, sir.
Okay. So those are the kinds of issues that aren't addressed in their proposal that we need to see something solid on. Now, in terms of the money, any questions about that before I move to money? John?
One of the things that Dee said at our special meeting was they were looking at what they could do in the transition, and she said, the way it probably would work is everybody would be refi, or fired and then rehired, or they'd be allowed to apply to be rehired, I think was what was under her breath. And then she said, we're also looking at whether we get to start from scratch, implying that new rates, new terms might apply to the employees as county employees versus streaming them right in with the same benefits and same package that they have with the city.
Right. The whole HR thing is a...
It's a fiasco if you want to keep the people we have.
It's a mess.
They'll be making their resumes out, but they won't be going to the county.
Well, we've got to remember, this is, this is an employer's, employees' market. You can go out and command your salary virtually because everybody's looking for somebody. So if we were to release all these people into unemployment lines with the expectation to be picked up by county, they may already be applying for jobs somewhere else, I don't know. But that's a risk we would be taking. And like Paul and I have discussed, we don't think that is a risk that the city needs to take, nor the county.
The last point we made to them is this is a crew that's been dedicated to Jefferson County entirely and answered every 911 call and not complained and tried not to take sides. We want to kind of support them for their dedication to our community.
Absolutely. Their employees are some of our most valuable assets, or they are our most valuable assets.
Definitely. I sweat more when we lose a dispatcher than when we lose a police officer.
Well, you've got to provide training that's expensive, bring them back up to speed, and it's a, it's a difficult job.
Very difficult. People go to college to be a police officer, not very many people go for a dispatcher, and those that apply are shocked at how much multitasking and, and just remaining calm under pressure that's needed in this type of job.
Yeah, you said, you said something about you sweat more when you lose a dispatcher than even a police officer. Why, why is that?
Like I said, we have a lot of people in college criminal justice, they want to be a police officer. It's a bigger job market. Probably half of our dispatcher applicants that show up arrive and say, I guess I didn't understand what dispatch was, I thought I'd just be the chief's administrative assistant. I work Monday through Friday, and when you're explaining to them, no, it's, you're answering 911, you're doing about 8,000 things and keeping track of all emergency services in the entire county. They back out about half the time when we sit through an interview, to the point where we've started warning them before, do you realize, check out the job description before you show up for your interviews, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or? All right, so the county proposal, just from a dollar point of view, is on page two. They offered us on Wednesday, which we did not have time to fully consider. We hadn't had time to talk to Dave and other interested stakeholders. So anyway, they made a motion on Friday to adopt their proposal on a day and a half's notice with almost no detail, which ended up being tabled and I guess it'll come up on the next agenda, right? So their proposal, if you look at page two, it looks very similar. You know, their costs are 160,000 dollars. The city's cost without salaries is 105. They want to split the salaries 40-60, so it'd be 183,000 to the county, 274,000 to the city, for a total of 343 to the county and 380,000 cost to the city. But again, if you take in that 36% valuation that the city is providing to the county in their receipts on that general basic, another 123,000 would have to shift hands, which means that their proposal is, would be for us to pay 60% of the salaries of dispatchers, and if we were to adopt this and they would become county employees, we would argue that no more than 33% of the salaries of dispatchers is what the city should pay in order for us to recoup those taxes that are being paid to the city and again to the county. That's where we're at.
So we would like some guidance from the council as to how to proceed at the January 18th meeting when this tabled motion likely is going to come up again. Is that correct?
Yes. So in...
I, first of all, I'd like to commend you guys for doing all this work because this is a...
First of all, I have to thank Aaron and Paul for coming in yesterday afternoon, on Sunday afternoon for two hours yesterday to go over this.
Way to go, guys.
I'm sorry.
Aaron complained to me for three hours about coming in for two hours. That's really, that's really five hours that was out of his life there. But, and I'd also like to commend the county for at least stepping up to the plate on the 60-40 part of it. But to me, the, the service of dispatch is city employees, and that would be, I would consider that a deal breaker, if you were to lose those employees to the county because there's no guarantee to them and they've done nothing wrong.
Right.
So that's my, my position.
It sounds like there are three issues. There's the issue of the employee transition and then the percentage that's being paid or like double taxation issue, and then the issue of how the decision-making is going to happen if that those employees become county employees from city employees. So could we counter their, their proposal with, with these three issues being addressed? Or in the alternative, suggest that we just bill them for the service?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, we, we...
We could vote no on the motion. Assume, assume this motion's brought by, we vote no on the motion. Forever they vote two. They vote for the motion, so it's two to two as our first motion, and it therefore fails. Then the next step, well, we could propose something else, for sure.
But they're adamantly opposed, it seems, to transferring money to the city if they think it's going to pay for dispatch employees' salaries.
Right, and I, I guess I kind of understand that. In their letter, they're concerned that the county citizens who live outside of the city don't have, they can't really go through the legislative process if they have issues with the, the way that those funds are being handled pursuant to the EMA levy, correct? Is that...
Well, they objected, they said they didn't have an input, but I have reminded them every time they object to that lack of input, that they do have input if they construct a budget and we adopt a budget that would include those salaries, they have say in that amount of money.
Or if you construct a board to kind of come together to address those decisions.
Guess what? We have a board. It's called the Emergency Management Commission. It already exists. We have nine people.
Okay, all right.
No, 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 no. By understanding what you're saying, we have nine people, seven of which are the mayors for each of the seven incorporated entities. They're very close to their constituents, they're elected, they face election every two years. Then we have a county supervisor and we have a Jefferson County sheriff. So we have the commission, the structure is already in place, we just have to use it. It just makes more sense from our view, it makes more sense to have this, these decisions made by a board of people who are close to their communities, rather than have a complete takeover by the county, by three people who answer primarily to the county, I believe, every four years. We think the county ought to have a seat at the table. We absolutely agree with that. They're just not, should just not be the only ones at the table, right? There should be a fairly broad representation of all the people who live in the county. You know, 60% of the people in this county live in Fairfield. Roughly 10% of the people, I believe, of the population live in the other six incorporated areas, like, let me see.
Batavia.
Batavia, Libertyville.
Libertyville.
Libertyville City.
Lockridge.
Lockridge, Packwood. And so 30%, 30% live in the unincorporated areas of county. So why not have a commission, or we have one, that represents, that has all of those people at the table making those decisions?
And that commission would be able to control how the levy is utilized then?
Our recommendation to the Jefferson County Service Agency, meaning the supervisors, because we're making the recommendation, was that that agency, service agency, construct a budget for that dispatch center, communications, and then refer that to the EMA for them to incorporate into their other planning that they have to do for emergency management. And then we can have a conversation with them and they can ask us questions and we can modify the budget and that sort of thing, just like you would do in any department within the city. The city department head comes up with his request to the city administrator, who then goes over it with them and ensures that all the expenses are legitimate, right, before he brings it to council.
Okay.
So the same kind of process would happen in our suggestion. Jefferson County Service Agency would put together a, a budget for the dispatch center and then present that to EMA for approval, and then they would levy for what they thought was appropriate. The city of Fairfield, I mean, their, their, their concern that they don't have representation close enough to these salaries to have impact, somehow suggests that somehow Fairfield City is irresponsible in assigning salaries to their employees. But I would dare you to find a single employee who thinks that they're being overpaid. And our salaries are, for the dispatch people, are well in line with dispatchers in other counties. There's never been an example of any egregious errors in regard to salaries that have ever happened in this city that I know of, and I, I would dare anybody to find an example.
Would just a wage survey satisfy that?
So the other thing is, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how strong their objection is that, because after all, we have city employees who serve the entire county and those are firefighters.
Right.
Which seems to work out pretty well. I don't see the difference, I don't see the difference in analysis.
I don't...
There's another example, too, that we haven't mentioned.
The library.
The library.
The library.
They just write a check to the library that is not earmarked for anything other than to the Jeff, or Fairfield City Library, which of course is the only full-service library in the entire county. And that, those funds just go to the library. They don't object about where we spend it or say where we spend it. It's a service provided to the entire county, which is the exact same thing as what the dispatch center is. It's a service provided to the entire county. Just happens that the city runs it.
Right. And they're not currently complaining about how the city is paying the dispatch, and they're paying a percentage of that?
They're not paying anything for employees.
They're not paying, okay.
They don't pay anything. That's why the disparity over the last 20 years is ticked up to almost three or four million dollars.
To your point, when we talked about during the 60-40 split, they didn't object either that they were overpaid, that we should cut their salaries before we do the 60-40 split either. So every indication, they have no objection, they're satisfied with the salaries that the employees are currently getting.
I don't think that the, where they're employed is the real issue.
Yeah.
I don't think it's the real issue.
Sorry?
I don't think to where, where the dispatchers are employed, I don't think that's the real issue.
I'm just telling you what they said to me.
Understood. But if they, if things were, if things were to stay the way they are right now, I think the county would be, we'd be happy with it, because we know what the numbers are, and the numbers suggest that we're overpaying, and we have been paying, overpaying for two, for decades now.
Right.
So we want guidance, what's the sense to council? When we have this motion, which I think is tabled, it'll probably come up next Tuesday, we're recommending to the council that you give us authority to vote no, and then we can proceed from there with discussions with the county for perhaps some, some different proposal.
Well, if you need a motion, I mean, I'll make a motion to decline their, their offer as written.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. There's a motion to decline the offer as written? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Rebecca, would you call a roll, please?
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Brezmasen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Last item of business or next, do we have any other, do we have any...
Are you looking for direction now?
Should we, huh?
Are you looking for direction?
Well, okay, we do this motion on Friday, on Tuesday morning at 8:00 and we voted to a tie, fails. What, do you want us to take on this step with the county supervisors, supervisors next Tuesday? Do you want us to express a particular point of view, like Tom just said, losing employees as city employees is a deal breaker? Is that the council's feeling?
I don't think so. I think we voted no against the motion and then we, we see, you know, we, we see how they respond. You know, we've got two tracks. We've got our negotiations with the county, which are ongoing, I do believe. We also have the proposal we have out there, which is that the Emergency Management Commission undertake the, the responsibility of preparing a budget and levying the county to raise the funds to operate, to fund that budget. That's a two, that's a second, that's another track. That track continues, this is a second, separate track, and that track, our track, we're talking about, we've been talking about, Doug's been talking about the last so many minutes, will continue with the meeting next Tuesday, starting with probably the, the rejection of their motion. Then from there, we open up further negotiations.
Now...
I was gonna, just speaking on the employee end of it, if I understand this right, there is no cost difference to the county, whether those employees are city employees or county employees, correct? Because we're, I mean, the, the split is still going to be 60-40 to cover all costs.
Right.
The only thing they're incurring is a, I don't want to use this as a derogatory term, but the only reason, the only thing they're going to incur is a headache of having that many more employees under their supervision.
Yeah, Bart, with that many additional people.
Right. So I, I just, it still kind of baffles me as to why, that's a sticking point to them as to why they want the employees under county supervision and not city jurisdiction.
Yeah, it baffles me. I don't think it is a sticking point. Not really, but we'll find out.
All right.
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing why it would be. Yeah, I agree with you.
I don't either.
Yeah.
So we, we can go talk to them on Tuesday morning. I've made it clear to them, I'll make it clear to them again, that anything that we agree to or listen to from them always has to come back here for final approval. We don't have any authority other than the vote you just gave us is the limit of our authority for Tuesday morning. But we can talk about anything.
Okay.
And we can bring it back to the council for further discussion and approval or not.
Yeah. And we're, we're pretty confident they'll, they'll know what we've talked about tonight, right? They'll know what we talked about tonight.
Yep.
Cause they're watching.
It's not on right now, but it will be.
There's, as I understand it, the council, the city supervisor, the county supervisor is scheduled to meet tomorrow morning on a, for a work session tomorrow morning about this 2080 agreement. So they'll have some things to talk about. My guess is by that time, they'll know what we've talked about. Anything further?
I'm done, I think. I'll just answer questions if anybody has any.
If not, are there any administrat, any other administrative or department reports?
You, we have discussed ad nauseam the two big topics that I've been working on the last couple weeks, so I don't think we need to give anything else, and Melanie's project report comes on the second. So I don't think she has anything either yet, so.
All right. All right, then. If there is no other reports, I'll just chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, been seconded. Any further? No. Rebecca, oh, no, forget that. All those in favor of adjoning this meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion stand, meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all.